Item one, regulation of Airbnb vacation rentals was brought forth by Commissioners Fox and Lambert. I don't know if either of you wants to say anything before we hear the staff presentation. Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Lambert, any statement?
Sure, sure, Mayor. I'll say something. And I know that this also ties closely with the next agenda item that we have for this morning. But just, you know, I think that vacation rentals are a growing industry. And I, I think it says a lot about our community that folks want to own vacation rentals in our neighborhoods because we have such beautiful neighborhoods. And I think we've seen the ability of these vacation rentals, when done well, that they can actually improve the value of homes, improve the neighborhoods. I think two of those that we've seen in the south end are Grandview Gardens and Casa Grandview. But this only works when either the homeowners themselves or local ordinances help to keep them to be good neighbors and to make sure that they hold up to good neighbor standards. So just wanted to see if there was new legislation that had come out. I know some neighboring municipalities have added some recent new policies addressing this. Just seeing what we can do as a city to help make sure that these business owners and homeowners are being held to the high standards that we expect in our neighborhoods.
Very good. Before we go any further, I did get a message from Commissioner Baduzzi. He's on the road, so no video, but he will be participating. So welcome, Commissioner. Commissioner Fox, did you want to add anything to that before we head into staff presentation?
Thank you. I, I echo what Commissioner Lambert said. I obviously, obviously think it's a great, it's great to have these Airbnbs in our community, especially I think when you're traveling with kids, you know, that you need a laundry room and a kitchen. And these are, you know, great amenities and for tourism, for, for, you know, visitors to be able to see all of our neighborhoods. But I am concerned about just, I've gotten many specific calls, but then also some more general calls about, you know, issues with what happens if somebody is having parties all night till four in the morning. There have been incidences where there's fighting on lawns. There's been incidences where neighborhood kids have found people passed out from an overdose in their front yard. So I guess I'm all, I'm just trying to figure out what should be, I think, the first step for residents when something like this occurs. And then, you know, if there's anything, any kind of follow-up, any kind of, anything that we could be putting in place. I know that it's regulated by the state, but just in terms of some of these maybe more frequent incidences happening in the same residence.
Okay, very good. Ms. Johnson, who from staff will be presenting on this item?
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney, Kimberly Rothenberg, will take the lead.
Okay, very good.
Good ma, good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg. Jason, if you'll put the presentation up, I'd appreciate it. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about regulation of vacation rentals based on the concerns that were raised by both Commissioners Fox and Lambert. And we're going to start with what is a vacation rental? The statute defines what types of buildings are encompassed within the definition. And certainly it's a collection of any single-family, two-family, three-family, or four-family homes or dwelling units. And so long as those units are rented more than three times per year on less than 30 days or less. And that's kind of the broad capture that grabs all of your single-family residences within the neighborhoods. So how are the vacation rentals regulated? Chapter 509 of the Florida statutes regulates the licensing and operation of vacation rentals. Most recently, we've had some Palm Beach County executive orders specifically regulating, under Executive Order 20, 2020-19, the operation of vacation rentals in face of COVID. There's some, a very specific plan that the county had submitted to the Department of Business and Professional Regulations. That plan was approved and the county has moved forward with execution of this order 20-19. Interestingly though, the state of Florida's governor's order 20-123, or actually it's 20-244, eliminated the necessity in any regulation that had previously required under 20-123 of vacation rentals. So I'm, based on the most recent order, I do not believe that the state is going to be in, in a place to report non-compliance with COVID-related issues as it relates to vacation rentals. But I'll have to clarify that with them. So what does the statute specifically preempt? The statute is not all-encompassing preemption, but rather is a preemption of, that you, you cannot prohibit within your jurisdiction operations of vacation rentals. And you cannot regulate the duration or frequency from which they lease the premise, i.e. a number of days, like seven days, 10 days, 30 days. We can't do any of that type of regulation. We also can't issue a license business tax receipt or otherwise until the state's licensing has been issued. There is a lot of regulation as it relates to the operation and health and safety issues for vacation rentals and other types of lodging establishments under Section 509. So what the statute says, there's a, a legal principle called conflict preemption. We can't create a law or ordinance that would conflict with the specific regulations that are set forth in Chapter 509. That doesn't mean that we cannot regulate activities within the properties based on our code. And in fact, you heard Commissioner Lambert say that she had heard that a municipality recently entered into a, entered or executed an ordinance that regulates vacation rentals. This is kind of a summary of the things or the type of things that Wellington started to regulate. They require a registry of the occupants who come and use the facilities. The ordinance also regulates the maximum occupancy based on the number of bedrooms and also limits during the daytime, no more than the occupancy per bedroom plus four people can be on the premises. So if the issue was a party and the unit was a four-bedroom unit, there could be eight people plus four for a total of 12 people. Otherwise, they'd be in violation of this particular ordinance. They also are regulating overnight parking and have some specific regulations regarding parking. They're requiring that the occupants review the sexual offender, sexual predator list and not rent to any of those folks who appear on that list if they're within 2,500 feet of particular, a school, a school bus stop or park. They also are requiring pets to be leashed. They require that pool safety regulations in the Florida statutes are complied with. And they also won't allow the business to be conducted at those locations until they've obtained their business tax receipt. And then they've put some parameters around additional information that you have to provide before you're granted a business tax receipt. So that's kind of in a nutshell what Wellington did. But I think that as it relates to what the city of West Palm Beach does, we have to look at what are those specific issues that are raised by and that we see are impacting the community? And whether or not the city already has code of ordinances that are in place that would apply to vacation rentals as well as any other rentals that would address that particular issue? And if not, what things can we do in order to address some of the issues? And I know that you've heard Commissioner Lambert say that following this presentation, I believe it's a presentation by Rick and his folks, Eric Schneider, who put together some proposed changes to the permitting of special events that will have an impact on all special events, including those events held at these vacation rentals that will address some of the parking issues and, and other issues that the city's been facing as it relates to these type of uses at vacation rentals. And with that, that's just a summary, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. One question I have. You mentioned the regulation by Wellington. And I thought I saw one of your slides that the regu, any local regulation must be approved on a case-by-case basis. Is that something that is done on a proactive basis? In other words, is a municipal to be required to submit the proposed regulations to some authority and get their blessing? Or can they just impose these regulations and take their chances?
No, Mayor. What I meant by that was when we as a, a local government decide that we want to regulate in an area that is, impacts a lodging facility for which vacation rentals fit, that we would need to look and see what is it that we want to regulate? Is it something that's already regulated under the state law so that we can make sure that we don't conflict with state law? And that we stay within our rights to regulate in that area? So I really said, we need to look at on a case-by-case basis, what are the type of things that we want to address? And is it something that we lawfully can do?
So that's an internal review on a case-by-case basis? Okay. Do we know whether Wellington's regulation has been challenged in any way by the industry?
It, it was adopted in the last month, so I doubt that it's been challenged yet. But I certainly can contact the city attorney and see if they've had any issues. They, they may.
Okay, all right. We do have some questions. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rothenberg. I think that the items that you outlined in Wellington's policy are definitely good for us to look at. I think going hand-in-hand with those regulations would be how will we enforce them? And, you know, I echo what Commissioner Fox said. I think we've all received multiple emails and phone calls from folks who live next door or on the same street as some of these vacation rentals that are repeat offenders of even the policies that we might have in place right now, like sound ordinances and such. And they feel at a loss for what to do next. They've, they've called the police. Some of them have said they're on a first-name basis with our code officers and just wanting to make sure that if we have policies in place, that they have the necessary teeth to also enforce.
I can respond just, just briefly, not that there was a specific question, but generally speaking, as it relates to all of the ordinances that we have in place, there's two ways that they can be, two ways that the city generally enforces. It's either under, through code enforcement and the special magistrate process, or it's if they indicate that they are subject to, you know, if, if the, if, if the action in the ordinance is unlawful or we, we create an ordinance that says that, says that the action is unlawful, it can also be prosecuted as a municipal ordinance violation over in the county criminal division. But as I said, these type of issues that the city's been facing generally are processed through the code enforcement, special magistrate process.
Any follow-up, Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor. And I guess, I didn't see this in the list that Wellington had, but maybe there's some sort of, you know, hey, if you get so many calls and code enforcement is brought out or police has called out so many times, that there's some sort of, you know, reprimand or cooling off period or something. I'm not sure what would be appropriate, but I'm not sure if that's in their ordinance or in any of ours.
I did not see that in the Wellington ordinance. And I think that, that, that it is an area that would take very, very careful crafting simply because licensing and the operation of the vacation rentals is an area in which the state and the Department of Business and Professional Regulations takes a lot of latitude there. Thank you.
All right. Madam President has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. I think it's really timely. I just met with a group of neighbors two Sundays ago on Flagler Lane that was having this issue with an Airbnb where the owner was actually out calling police on his own Airbnb because of a party that had gotten out of control. So we have owners that don't want this to occur too. And I think really important things came out of, out of that conversation in regard to somewhat of what Commissioner Lambert was talking about on enforcement. I think looking at the licensing and business tax receipt, one of the questions was the escalation of if there's no business tax receipts and if there's no licensing done, as well as looking at a three-bedroom house that's being rented for up to 12 people, looking at how we can escalate that. So compliance on that side. But also my question is compliance on the other side, which becomes really difficult. In that particular case, the police were called out because there was about 140 people at this party, which caused parking issues, et cetera. But from the street, there was nothing legally enforceable for the police to shut things down. So, you know, the questions surrounded noise ordinances, which is mainly what the issue is, whether it's 140 people or just 10 people that are there. You know, what, what can neighbors do about the excessive noise that's coming from these properties? And how can we help create enforceable regulations for our police to be able to help us with vacation rentals that are not being good neighbors? So is there a way we can set up, you know, at this particular party, they were collecting money at the door. They were collecting money for drinks. They were collecting money for various things. Can we have ordinances that say you can't have residential parties that are, you know, income-producing and still allow private residences to have fundraisers or allow them to have quiet enjoyment of their property? So I think that, that's where my question surrounds, both on the, the enforcement side of the regulations around Airbnbs themselves or short-term rentals of how can we get better compliance for them being licensed, et cetera? But then also, how can we help our police have the tools to regulate when they get out of, out of compliance on that side?
Well, a, as it relates to the, the police and being called for noise issues, the police have the same latitude to enforce the noise ordinance on vacation rentals as they do on any other type of business that's violating the noise ordinance. I'm not 100% sure what the question is. I mean, obviously they, I believe that they need to be able to hear it and to be able to perceive that the ordinance is being violated in order to write a municipal ordinance violation. If that's the issue that the folks are turning down the music before the police gets there, I think that it's just operationally an issue. The second part of your question, I'm sorry, Commissioner, was what?
First, a clarification, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
For the noise ordinance, Ms. Rothenberg, what is the noise ordinances within residential neighborhoods for a decibel level and a shut-off time?
There is no decibel ladder, level in, in the neighborhoods unless you're in the downtown entertainment district. And then we have a, a specific district that is the entertainment district that's regulated by decibel. The rest is the plainly audible standard that's been upheld in courts so that they have to be able to hear it plainly audible, which is a, a level that's above normal speaking conversation that is, annoys the community in essence.
And then is there, is there a time that, that?
There is, there is currently, and we're in the process of, of taking it out, there is a provision in the ordinance that indicates that it's a prima facie evidence of a violation. If, and I'm going to go from memory, if the noise occurs between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, some courts, I understand, have construed that to mean that if it doesn't occur between those times and it's not a violation, and for that reason, we're going to strike that language because it really was supposed to make it easier if it did occur during those times. But if it's causing the police any problems at all, we're simply going to recommend to the commission that that language is strict, struck from the ordinance and that we proceed with just the plainly audible standard at all times and no prima facie showing.
Thank you. The second part of my question was around the regulation of business tax receipts and having the correct number of bedrooms, et cetera. How can, I, I mean, I, I understand the city can't be everywhere all at once and the neighbors are going to be the ones that know best that there are crowds of 12 people going into a three-bedroom house. How can neighbors help get that information back to the city? Help the city have compliance and then follow up on that just to make sure that everything has been?
As it relates to the business tax receipt, the business tax receipt itself is just a tax. The operative thing that the city issues in, in addition to the business tax receipt, once they pay the tax, the tax is paid and there's no regular, regulatory authority under the tax. But we do have regulatory authority under the certificate of use portion of the city's code. So that would be an area that we could look at to see what, how we can, how we can modify to give a little bit more teeth without, though, overstepping our bounds as it relates to the state's ability to regulate the continued use of lodging facilities, including vacation rentals. So it's, it's a little bit of a delicate balance, but something that can be looked at.
Thank you.
Ms. Rothenberg, have we seen any local regulation of vacation rentals from out, around the state that have passed muster? Has this been tested? Have any been successfully tested?
There's a few cases out there that look at specific regulations. I have a, an older memo from 2008 that can be updated. There's not been a, a full ordinance like Wellington's, let's say, that's specifically directed at vacation rentals, that you could just say, hey, this passes muster. But certainly I think that you can read all of the cases together and construe what type of things you can regulate and what you can't. And I'll give you an example. In, in the statute itself, in 509, there's a provision that, that the state says that they won't allow or they're, they embrace the concept or idea that you can't have nuisance activity at the properties like drug sales, prostitution, gang-related activity and other nuisance activities. So I think that if we created regulations that prohibit nuisance activity, it, it shouldn't conflict with the state's statute. Would it be subject to some challenge, potentially if a business operator were unhappy with how it applied to his building? Certainly. I mean, you're always subject to that type of challenge.
Okay, we do have a question from Commissioner Baduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn my video on here for a second. Thanks. So the question I have, I, I understand that the state statute preempts us from taking action or regulating Airbnb rental properties. But I assume that homeowners association and property owners associations are permitted to regulate these types of, of rentals. And if my assumption is correct, would these, some of these areas that are affected by, you know, the short-term rentals, be able to organize homeowners associations that could preclude this kind of rental activity?
Well, based on my limited knowledge of homeowners association law, I do know that there, I do know there are some areas that they are allowed to regulate that otherwise wouldn't be permissible. I'd really have to look at the condominium statute and see if this is one of those areas that they're allowed to regulate what type of activity happens within the condominium associations and whether or not regular neighborhoods would constitute a neighborhood association under 718. And I, I just don't know the answer to that as, as I sit here.
Thank you. I, I just was, all right, could I follow up, Mayor?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was just looking for some alternative if we're preempted from acting. Is there any, you know, way that these neighborhoods could take, you know, a little bit more control by somehow organizing either in a civic association, a homeowner association, something like that? Because as, my understanding is that the HOAs and POAs in some of our gated communities and elsewhere are regulating them and don't allow these short-term rentals.
I, I wouldn't doubt that, but like I said, I'd have to look at the condominium statute, number one, and make sure that, that that is something they can do. And then number two, I don't know that the condominium statute would automatically apply to a neighborhood that gets together and creates an association, but, but I can certainly look at it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And also, I guess, Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, I did want to say, Commissioner Baduzzi, I'm not saying that you can't regulate at all because there are regulations that are appropriate, I believe, for vacation rentals. Noise, parking, the conditions of the building, regular code enforcement type issues. I think they should be able to be managed through regulations by the municipality under our home law authority without conflicting with the state statute.
And I think that the major difference there is that when you become, when you buy property that's governed by one of these associations, you expressly agree to abide by those rules and regulations. So you, you've consented to regulation in effect, i- if there is a formal association. Whether, you know, just five or six people in the neighborhood can, can do that, I, I don't know. It's probably a tougher question. We do have another question from Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the other topics that I've heard relevant to this conversation is that neighbors are continually concerned that, as we do have very desirable neighborhoods to have, you know, short-term rentals, et cetera, that we start to get a concentration of vacation rentals on a street, which is much different than having an ownership neighborhood. So as we go down the road, I think the question would be, would we look into some sort of regulation of density of vacation rentals so that only so many are allowed within so much of a geographic region? I don't know if that, if we're preempted out of doing that. But I think, you know, many neighbors are, are vacation rental owners themselves. And so it's not an anti-vacation rental sentiment. It's just about making sure that we still keep the fabric of our neighborhoods intact where you can go next door and, and know who's there, but also allow visitors to come in. So, you know, I think that, that's one of the concerns that I hear coming from the neighborhoods. Would we be able to, down the line, look into some sort of density regulation?
I, I believe that I've seen a case on density. I don't recall what the outcome of it was. I'll pull it and I'll, that'll be an easy question to answer. That one, I believe, has already been answered by the courts.
All right, so you'll follow up and get back to, to us with that answer?
I will.
The other takeaway, Madam City Attorney, is if you could do a, an updated survey from around the state and to see if there are any local regulation ordinances that have regulated in this area that have, that seem to have passed muster, that would be good information for us to know.
I will update the research and make sure I get it out to you, Mayor, and the commission.
And yeah, if you could report back to us. Because I guess what I'm hearing is a desire, Commissioners, to regulate to the extent we can, recognizing that our hands are somewhat tied by state law. But if there are examples out there of, of local regulation, we should at least be aware of those and take those into account. All right, anything else on this item? Yes, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I think that this is great. We're looking into this. It's, from my perspective, it's a matter of quality of life for our neighbors. My comment, and I, I think that this really ties to our next conversation as well. But in the south end of the city, the neighborhoods where this is happening and where this is becoming an issue, we already have issues with parking on the neighborhood streets, which I understand is within law. But when there's these parties or multiple folks who are staying at the house more than what the house can hold, it's, it's creating even more issues on top of an issue we already have in the city. So just wanted to make a note of that, that we look into that as well with any ordinances that we may come up with. Thank you.
And Madam City Attorney, am I correct in understanding that if there are existing ordinances, resolutions on the books, we can enforce those, such as parking? I mean, if we, if we have a limitation on parking in certain neighborhoods or if there are code issues that, a non-littering issue, we can enforce those, correct?
Yes, you can. Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
There should be some housing standards on occupancy too that are enforceable.
You know, what would be nice is to have made available to us and the Commissioners ordinances, resolutions that would specifically apply to vacation rentals, such as whether it's parking, housing restrictions that are already on the books. So it doesn't look like it is specific to vacation rentals. That, that we can, you know, if we do have a, 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 a list of those, we can certainly start sharing those with the neighborhoods and say, why you, we can't restrict? and say, while you, we can't restrict vacation rentals per se, we can certainly, uh, attempt to clamp down on violation of the following. That would be helpful. I, I think that would be helpful.
I will get that.
Okay. Uh, I don't see anything else here. We'll move to item two, uh, the draft ordinances for special events. Um, Commissioner Lambert, do you want to, uh, say anything before we get into a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this just ties in nicely with the previous conversation. Um, and, you know, just as it relates to folks having events that might be at a venue within our neighborhoods, adding to increased parking issues, um, and quality of life issues. Thank you.
Okay.
Um,
Yes.
Mayor, I was just gonna, if, if I might, make a suggestion with, um, the, I, I love your idea of getting us the ordinances that might be in place. Um, and I don't know if, if somebody on your staff, or if this was what you intended already, could maybe make a FAQ about our ordinances that relate to vacation rentals so that it's something that's very easily distributed and, and, um, handed out to the residents who may have concerns.
Uh, that, that's, that's a great idea. Let, let me see what they come up with, and then we'll try to massage it and put it into a format for distribution. But, but I wanted to see what it, what it looked like, and, and certainly have you all, uh, look at it as well. But I think the FAQ is, is a very, uh, good idea. So we'll see. We'll do it a step at a time. We'll, we'll get, we'll get the list of ordinance, et cetera, uh, massage that, and then maybe put it into a more, uh, fancier form. All right, so, so Ms. Rothenberg, you kind of get a sense where we're going with that?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Okay, very good.